I think we'll go ahead and get started with our work session. The first one, I wanted to say hello to everybody. Hope you enjoyed Dr. King's Day yesterday and did something to celebrate all the great work that he did for our nation. So hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to join in some festivities and there's more that's happening this week. So just look at our website, the City of Iowa City website, and you'll see some more opportunities to celebrate Dr. King's life. All right, we are going to go with our first item, which is the city annexation policy, and it is IP three and four from info packet, January 14th. And so I'm gonna ask our city manager to maybe lead us in this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Just by way of update for you all and for the public, this was prompted by the recent annexation application that we had for the Carson Farm property, which is on the west side of the community. The council had some discussions about that and you ultimately deferred that annexation indefinitely at the applicant's request. Since that last meeting, the applicant has withdrawn the application, which means that it is no longer kind of pending your consideration in that indefinite status anymore. If the applicant wishes to bring that annexation back to the city, they will have to start the whole process over again, which which will place them at the Planning and Zoning Commission before it gets back to you. That being said, I still think that there's some urgency to to get some direction from council on any changes to the annexation policy that you wish to see. While we don't have any other annexations pending at this very moment, as the council's aware, we've been building infrastructure to support annexations in other parts of the community and those applications could could come forward at any time and it's best that we have some clarity around it. So in your packet, as IP three, you have the staff memos from 2018 when this policy was created. Those will show you a little bit of the evolution of the policy from the initial staff proposal to some suggestions that were offered by the HCDC Commission and Mayor Throgmorton at the time and kind of goes to show how we ended up where we did with that policy. It has only been, there's only been one annexation, a smaller annexation off of American Legion Road that has fallen subject to that policy, so we don't have a ton of experience with it. But again, if there's going to be changes, it'd be good to to get those wheels in motion now. So really, this item was placed on your work session agenda to allow you some discussion and hopefully you can discuss whatever process you feel is is needed for us to revisit that that policy. IP four also has some recommendations from the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, so just wanted to make sure you noted that in your packet as well.
Thank you, Jeff. So councilors, I think we are where really just talking about the affordable housing plan, maybe where we want to move forward. The Carson, as Jeff mentioned, that is off the table for now.
I have just a quick question, and maybe I've missed it along the way somewhere, but when it comes to the 10% requirement for the units in in the development, the proposed development, be affordable, is that left up to the developer to decide? Say, maybe they have, it's a 20 units, so two of them have to be affordable. He makes those two, he or she makes those two, two-bedroom units, they're smaller and less expensive. So is that up to them or is there somehow we could have some sort of a clause that says that the affordable units would have to be comparable to the other? I mean, I know we probably can't tell them what they can build, but I just had a concern about that.
Yeah, it's a very good and legitimate concern and one that's addressed in a lot of affordable housing policies across the country. You want to make sure that the affordable units don't don't stand out in any way when you're building new neighborhoods like that. The current language reads that that the income target shall be consistent with the city's existing program requirements. I think from a staff standpoint, we would kind of carry that over into other other requirements. So for example, in the Riverfront Crossings policy, the unit mix has to be consistent with the 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 market rate unit mix. So if you're building, if your building has all, has a mix of three and one bedrooms, we would expect the affordable units to be a mix of three and one with, you know, with similar type of placement, you know, we wouldn't in an apartment building, for example, in Riverfront Crossings, we wouldn't put all the affordable units on one floor. They'd be scattered throughout the the building again, so that you you couldn't really tell which units were affordable and we would carry that over to the 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 annexation policy as well. So we're definitely mindful of that, of the importance of that. And I think the existing language gives us enough, in my opinion, to to work with that.
I agree with that.
I think I was, I want to chime in here. I, of course, was one of the ones that asked for us to pause a little bit for the affordable housing piece. And I think a lot of that had to do with us creating an affordable housing plan for our community. And so, of course, it was very nice to see in writing what the staff submitted, as well as what the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition submitted, just the history of what happened with, you know, with the decision. Of course, I read that a little bit beforehand. It was kind of nice to reread it again. I saw, of course, recommendations from the Affordable Housing Coalition. I guess my bigger question would be for staff, where are we with the creation of affordable housing group for our plan?
Yeah, so in that same information packet, about midway through would be, let's see, it's IP, sorry, IP seven in that packet. I just have a quick memo update letting you know who that I have asked to be on that committee. So there's a 12-member committee that is now gathered and my next task is to find a a date and time that works for all 12 members. Usually scheduling that first meeting is the most difficult, so we've got some scenarios out to those members to to figure out the best time that'll work. I expect we'll be able to get together in early February and my communication to those 12 members is is that it's my hope to have that plan wrapped up in September or October so that if there's any budget considerations, we can get that rolled into the next fiscal year's budget proposal.
Thanks for that update. And and I know some of the members are very eager to get started on that. With the knowledge of this going into, you know, September, I think that just becomes a little bit of a challenge, you know, if we should see anything come across our tables again from their affordable housing piece and it may not even be annexation, but it could be something, you know, local that's already within the city limits. And so, you know, I think one of the things that Jeff asked us to do is to kind of give some direction. And I guess mine was more so of a pause to try to figure out where, you know, what is the plan for the affordable housing group that's going to come together to do some recommendations to council? I certainly didn't have that information a couple of weeks ago. I knew that it was going to be in the works and now we do know that we have a created group that's going to be moving forward. So I don't know that I really have any directives towards to give to staff. I I feel that depending on whatever comes before us, I'm gonna have to consider it at that time, depending on the size and scope of the project.
My thoughts were...
I mean, I think that, I guess to me, there's two issues here. One is, one I think is a really big process issue, and I guess I'm a little bit concerned with the comments you just made, Mayor, about how with the idea that we're going to be developing a new affordable housing plan. I guess I'm not sure what you're thinking, that I would hope that people are not thinking that we're simply going to put all development that deals with affordable housing on hold until we have a new affordable housing plan. I mean, typically, what in the 11 years I've been around in the city, we have always, I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have been working on something and there were plans of some change coming forward, we have typically always gone with what was in place at the time that process was started. So to even consider that we might not, might not look favorably on a development or might make decisions based on an upcoming plan, I find frankly quite troublesome. And I guess that was one of my real big concerns with, you know, the the lack of, I guess it was one of my big concerns with the discussion on the annexation was that we already had an annexation policy in in place and it just seemed like the discussion was about, well, let's hold off until we can potentially change that annexation policy. It made, to me, that decision on that annexation should have been simply based on the annexation policy that was in place and not delaying things because now we're in the middle of that process and want to change. So I think we have the whole issue of how does this council work in terms of process? And I I find that very concerning. The second one is, what do we think of the annexation policy itself? And I think the staff and community and a lot of stakeholders put a lot of time and effort into that annexation policy two years, two, two and a half years ago, in terms of affordable housing related to annexation. And personally, I'm comfortable staying with what we currently have. If if we are going to entertain something different, I think it's got to be a whole lot more time and effort than just looking at one memo. I think we really have to bring all these people back to the table and I I would prefer to stay with what we have. It's pretty new and we've only had one annexation and I think it was a big improvement from what we'd had.
Well, I was, I was pleased to hear from the Affordable Housing Coalition, which essentially said that, at least with respect to Carson Farms, to stay with the existing policy, annexation policy. They they did suggest that we grant the land. Some of the other options, you know, that one could consider were set aside, I think in part because in my mind, the the piece of property is so large, close to 200 acres, that granting the land to to either the city or to, how is it worded here? To nonprofit affordable housing developers or and or to the city made made a lot of sense to me for Cor- Carson Farm because it's such a large parcel, it seems like a great opportunity to consider onsite affordable housing. So with respect to Carson Farm, I think I would, I would support their recommendation when it, when it comes back to the city and goes through the process. In terms of the affordable housing update, you know, perhaps if possible, we could look, you know, look at the the issues before that that group, that committee, and see which ones would be the highest priority moving forward. So it may be possible if, for example, we wanted, you know, given the time sensitivity of the annexation, you know, affordable housing as it relates to annexation, that's a great opportunity to to enter into the agreement what we want. If if it's something that the committee decides to, you know, in the in the big picture to accelerate within that planning process, so we could have it as soon as possible, that might be one option. But for Carson Farm, I think the idea of following, you know, supporting basically the suggestion of the Affordable Housing Coalition makes a lot of sense in this case. And so for me, as it, in terms of the issue that we had before us, which was Carson Farm, I'm very comfortable with their recommendation.
I just want to put a little bit finer point on that. I think the Carson Farms is off the table now and the recommendation that we received was to stay with the existing policy and essentially require one of the three options that the current policy provides. So if that was where we were going to land, we should have approved the annexation and and directed staff to, you know, do do what they could to get the one option chosen over the other two. I don't, I I just have a little bit of a, maybe a little bit different process concern, but but piggybacking off of what Susan said, I mean, the the majority of this council approved the existing policy. And I, you know, again, when when I'm sitting here looking at what might we want to change about the policy, I appreciate that we've got a new affordable housing group forming to to look at new recommendations, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to defer not not just this project, which is off the table, but to defer indefinitely any other projects that might come before us. I mean, people, the, whether it's the landowners or or residents who are, you know, have an interest in affordable housing or the nonprofit stakeholder groups like the Affordable Housing Coalition, everyone benefits from knowing what the rules are and where we stand now. So as I said at the last meeting, I'm, I think the current policy is good. It went through a thoughtful process with the recommendation from HCDC and and the council and the mayor and the public hearing at the time. So I don't, I don't really see what it is we need to reevaluate or change. And I think that's the direction staff's looking for is, is there something we want to change?
Well, I'm not suggesting changing, you know, the the recommendation from the Housing Coalition was to maintain the existing, you know, work within the the framework of the annexation policy as we have it. And of the options, they they were leaning toward the option of acquiring the land, a 10% equivalent for affordable housing of the three options that would be available. That, as I said, that seemed to me to be, given the size of this property, an option that I would lean on, lean toward myself because it is such a large piece of land, roughly the size of the North Side neighborhood, that providing affordable housing in the mix. And I think it was important, the, some of the language in their, in their letter to us, the question of integration and long, the long-term aspects that that would would follow from such land acquisition, right, are to me, two of the critical aspects of our affordable housing policy, trying to extend the life of it and also to integrate it within the community. Both of those don't require a change, I think, at this point for Carson Farm. And Susan, I'm not suggesting we defer on every annexation that comes to us until we have a revised policy. You know, I agree with you, whatever the policy is at the time of the annexation, that that should be what we go with. I think part of my concern was, this is such a large piece of land and and the, you know, this question of the annexation policy as it relates to affordable housing, so important that, like the mayor said, I I was just pausing, wanting to get better, a better understanding, particularly from the Affordable Housing Coalition, how how we might approach this. And I'm satisfied now, you know, with with their their letter, how they have framed it. It seems like a very reasonable approach at this point. So that's, that's basically where I'm at and I'm not suggesting that we put all annexation proposals on hold until we have, you know, some revised policy that came out of the Affordable Action Plan, Housing Plan.
So when I reviewed the annexation policy, I was really struck by the process that that council and staff went through in arriving at it and and the, and the focal points were to allow for flexibility in addressing the issues presented by any, any particular annexation, because this is not, it's, it's different from dealing with land that is already a part of the city. Every annexation is going to be different. They, they, they wanted to make it consistent with the programs that existed at the time, emphasize types of affordable housing contributions that would not require city to monitor income and with a preference for long-term, for long-term affordability and to create those parameters so that staff and council and whomever was dealing with it, once the annexation took place, would have a chance to to help create whatever, the the best model possible. And as we're looking at both the the new committee that's being formed or whatever we want to call it, to look at a, at a new, a new policy and this, it seems to me that the focus, if we're going forward, the focus really should be on what is the Iowa City Affordable Housing Plan going to be? And then later, later on, potentially look at, once we have that in place, look at, do we want to then change? Is, are there things, changes that were made to that that we would want to apply to annexation? So I mean, I was in favor of, and I remain in favor of using the existing annexation policy, but it, but it strikes me that that the, from a process point of view, that working on the city, what we're going to do as a city going forward with the land that we have in the city is what makes sense and that you, that leaving our annexation policy as it exists until we have that policy in place also makes sense to me.
Well, my decision on on that Carson Farms, I know we're not looking particularly at that, but it wasn't based on, let's review the annexation policy because it was based on what's actually in there, because one of the items is that this annexation, this area of land won't place an undue burden on the city and city services. And I just see that it's so far out on the outskirts of town that 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 it is going to place a burden. And as far as the affordable affordability of the units, I I just don't think that's the most ideal location in our city to have affordable units, because currently we don't have the transit out there and that's what a lot of folks who live in the affordable units need is city transit. So that's what mine was based on. I I based it on actually what the annexation policy reads.
I really think the affordable housing, you know, needs and the crisis, it is really, the affordable housing need in this community is overdue. And we, we, I understand that we have new annexations policy that has been done and thank you for everybody who really, you know, was part of that from the previous council or the current council. Thank you. It is, for me, is really a step to move forward. It's not like really great, I don't want to say it's not a great deal, but it is, it's good base to start with, but we can even build on it to make it even better. We talked about this during, we have 17 items that we created for Black Law After Black Life Matter Movement. One of them is affordable housing and I think this is really a need. And even though we have something on blast, but after this movement, all of us agree that, you know, we need this affordable housing, so we need to change the current policy that we have to make it even better so it can fulfill the need of the community and especially black people and people of color who are really, really need of affordable housing. You know, I I just believe that, you know, yes, this is, this item for the farm is not on the table right now, they already withdrew their application, but if they, I I will agree with the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Coalition if those people would have come back sooner. If like just starting doing this and they come back, so we can go with that. But still, we, as Jeff said, we already have the, created the the committee for the affordable housing. I will agree with the mayor on bringing, like, that those people also review this. But just in case, if it take a lot, you like a time and the, this plan came again to the table and they they want to put their application back, we still can use our recommendation by the Affordable Housing Coalition. I think it's really great recommendation, I agree with it. And but, you know, we have to keep in mind that this is something that we need to change it. Affordable housing is like a critical need for a lot of people in this community who are suffering. Myself as one of the people who really was looking for houses for a long time and I know how it feel, I know a lot of people who couldn't afford the house and they, a lot of people live in two-bedroom and when they needed three-bedroom and four-bedroom. It's speaking about making more affordable housing in that side, we need that, even though we don't have the disposition, as Pauline said, you know, this is not a excuse not to have affordable housing in the area and make the city segregation, you know, segregated by economically by, you know, we can, we are the city, we are the one who do transportation. Why we don't add a line for those people is that the reason? I think we are the city, whenever we do affordable housing for the people and we know those low-income people, we have to provide a mean of transportation for them. They are a taxpayer and they should, we should serve them. I really, right now, even though this is not on the table, but I, I will go as a recommendation for the Affordable Housing Coalition, from the Affordable Housing Coalition, otherwise we should wait for the Affordable Housing Committee to come up with a solid plan for affordable housing in Yonara. Thank you.
Can I ask staff a question, just to clarify for council and for any public who might be listening a little bit on the process and kind of the order of things? So we do the annexation and we have an annexation policy and the developer has to agree to abide by that annexation policy. At what point do they have to present and and negotiate with council or how does, or with staff, et cetera, on exactly how they plan to comply with that? In other words, fee in lieu of number of units, you know, land, et cetera? Can you help clarify that for us, please?
Essentially, what they have to do is, there has to be an affordable housing agreement in place before they can get their building permit.
So if they do the annexation, and I'm just talking in general, so if we have a voluntary annexation and we we annex it under this current policy, which right now it sounds like the majority of council is fine with, at least for right now, then we have, we, do we have another, we have to have another zoning then because they're going to come in as interim, particularly in this area, we had to redo the comp plan and all of that. And we could, please tell me if I'm wrong, as part of that rezoning, have conditions on that rezoning that would help lead us towards the kind of an affordable plan that we wanted for that area? Is that a reasonable assumption?
No, you would want those conditions to be done at the time of annexation because your authority with respect to annexation is, is, is far broader than it is with zoning. I think the current annexation plan gave you all the authority you needed to impose those conditions at the time of annexation. I think it was not clear from the conversation by council as to what the issue was. Was it with the 10% and 20 years or was it with the type of mechanism that you wanted to see be used? If it was the type of mechanism, we had that flexibility in the annexation policy and we could have had the council wanted to add a detail to that or directed council or directed staff to have those requirements included at the time of the Affordable Housing Agreement being executed.
Okay, maybe I, maybe I wasn't clear with my question and I, sorry to take the time, but I think this process and the steps and timing are really important because I think that's impacting how council members are looking maybe at this differently from one another in terms of what kinds of things they want clarified. what kinds of things they want clarified at what point? And I think it's I think it's important that we're all on the same page understanding how far down that process staff and council has input on how certain things are done. So when I read the language of the annexation policy, there are lots of options in there and lots of flexibility in there about how the developer can fulfill the affordable housing obligation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we could potentially not have a signed agreement with the developer on how they're going to fulfill that obligation up until the point they start pulling building permits. Is that correct?
Correct.
But could we use the rezoning process to conditions with the rezoning process to move us toward what we wanted in terms of that affordable housing?
No, I think you would do that at the annexation stage. Look at it, you know, here's a good example with the we do when we do a rezoning to riverfront crossings, we include a condition that essentially says they have to execute an affordable housing agreement showing how they're going to comply with the riverfront crossings inclusionary zoning ordinance before they get their building permit. Now that ordinance, as you know, has very specific requirements. There's only certain things that the city can insist on. There's a lot of option available to be to the developer. Because we're at the annexation stage, we have more authority at the time we execute that affordable housing agreement to say we're not interested in doing, you know, this, we want to, we want to talk to you about doing this particular mechanism, what serves? How can we reach agreement? What serves you? What serves the city best, et cetera? And that would be done at that stage. But you're 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 we would have a lot more authority because it was done at the annexation. It was a condition of annexation. And it's a different condition than it is in a rezoning underneath the riverfront crossings inclusionary housing ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but the full thing doesn't have to be executed until they get ready to pull a building permit.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds to me, if I'm understanding this right, that where this process fell apart is that at least at the council level, we didn't really have any discussion of conditions we wanted to put in place at the time of annexation regarding how they fulfilled the affordable housing requirement is.
Well, but I think that you didn't you don't necessarily have to do that because the policy itself, which is then incorporated into the annexation agreement, provides that flexibility. Right for a later determination at the point when the developer has much better idea of what the plans are, et cetera, et cetera. Right for for making that decision. I mean.
Yeah, if I maybe I can help. Part of the benefit of of letting the process play out a little bit more in this case is is that there there's a ton of other variables that that just need to need to catch up. So if if we're to put this condition on the annexation upfront, you're basically saying 10% of the units have to be publicly owned or in the hands of a of a nonprofit. And then you can think of, well, the city is going to come back and say, well, we'd like we'd like park land too. And we could use a land for a fire station. Oh, and guess what? The school district would like a a spot out there. And then we get through the the planning process and we say, well, this is really the most logical place for a regional stormwater detention. And all of a sudden, there's not a whole lot of land left over for development and and it just it just doesn't start to 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 click as one. So that's why we like to let that planning process play out a little bit more, allow some of those discussions to evolve. Because it may be that one or more of those variables have to be kind of sacrificed or we have to explore some some other options. So the more requirements you put up front just limits your flexibility with all those other variables down down the road. And that's why we as staff were hesitant to say this is how it must be done at this really early stage in the process.
Thank you. Discussion's been very helpful.
It doesn't sound like council has any recommendations at this time or directives toward staff for affordable housing. I I do think the conversation has been helpful and of course, I'm sure we could all give more comments. Personally, I won't. Are there any more comments on this item?
I just want to ask Jeff, is there is anything that you think is going to come soon for annexation or did you hear about anything else that would have come soon?
No, I'm not aware of any pending application processes, but you know, just thinking about our infrastructure improvements over the last couple of years, whether it's McColister's extension or the sewer project that that's recently been in front of council. We those improvements will make that land much more ready for annexation and development. So we kind of anticipate that they'll come, but whether that's six weeks, six months or six years, we really don't know.
Thank you.
Anything else on this item? All right, the next item is review city tax rates. And this is IP five from info packet for January fourteenth as well. And I know, do we have Dennis with us? Hello.
Hello.
I know that you gave us information in the info packet.
I did. And in that memo, you know, the council's discussion was whether to or not to keep the property tax rate as current level versus the the recommended lowering of 10 cents. And so this memo is just kind of a little bit of analysis as far as the different components of the property tax rate and the levies that are set in there for specific purposes. And I can share my screen here and kind of go through that memo if you if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. And so take a look at it, the FY twenty one rate property tax rate for the city.
Dennis, your your memo cut off there on your screen showing.
Okay. Oh, can you can you see the memo?
No.
No. Okay. All right.
We could at first. It was and it disappeared.
How about now?
Looks good.
Yes.
Interesting. I just moved it on my on my monitor is all I did. So so take a look at it. The FY twenty one property tax rate is is currently what is being levied and and this is the city's portion of the property tax rate. Not to be confused with, you know, the county or the school district or other other portions of the property tax rate. And this the city's ability to levy taxes comes off chapter three eighty four of the Iowa code. And it lays out the different levies that the city can utilize to to levy property taxes and then those specific purposes for each of those particular levies. Now, not all the levies in that Iowa code pertain to us. And some of those require a referendum to be utilized. And then some such as the debt service levy may have a mix of referendum versus, you know, the city's authority to to just levy it. And so what I laid out is is each of the current levies that the city has and then the total and then proposed. And right now the proposal is to reduce the state's debt service levy rate by 10 cents from two fifty seven to two forty seven, which would lower the overall rate from fifteen seventy seven to fifteen sixty seven. And and the reason we're proposing that is because, you know, when we lay out our CIP and our debt planning and we issue those bonds, we look at our debt requirements on an annual basis to see what we need to levy for property taxes to make that payment. And for fiscal year twenty two, we have the ability to lower that property tax rate by set 10 cents and still achieve the overall planning for the capital improvement program as well as meeting our fiscal year twenty two bond and principal interest payments. And so why that that's why that reduction is currently being proposed. And to break that down a little bit further, I put in there a little bit further in the memo, talk about where the levy is currently set at for each particular levy. And also what limits are in the Iowa code as far as what what we are allowed to levy at. So for instance, the city's regular general levy has a limit in the code of eight dollars and 10 cents. And our levy rate is 100% of that is what is available. The transit levy, which is used for operation and maintenance of a public transit system has a state limit of 95 cents and we are levying the full 95 cents. The self insurance and insurance programs, we are loving 29 cents and that's based on eligible expenditures. And so we are loving for 100% of our eligible expenditures. The emergency levy has an alpha rate of 27 cents and we are only living 24 cents of that. And the reason that is 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 the council was targeting about a million dollars for carbon emission reduction. And that 24 cents amount amounts to approximately a one million dollars of revenue. Aside from that, a directed purpose from the council is really eligible for any general fund purpose for that emergency levy. The employer benefits levy actually is a combination of several levies for police and fire pension, other benefits, and then VICA hypers. And that is for the retirement insurance benefits for employees. And right now we are living at three dollars and thirty four point four cents. We could love you up to three dollars and sixty one cents, and that's based on eligible eligible expenditures in our budget. One other levy that as I was reviewing them that has potential that the city might be able to utilize is the civic center levy, you know, the the complex in the city hall, police, fire, the parking is long been known as the civic center. There is a thirteen and a half cent levy for civic center operation and maintenance. The city does not levy this and and I cannot see that we ever have or it is if we have, it's been a while since we have. So if the city council wanted to maintain the current levy rate at fifteen seventy seven instead of lowering it, essentially the rates, the places that they would be able to do it would be the emergency levy would have three cents. The player benefits could have up to, you know, almost 27 cents. And the civic center could potentially have about thirteen and a half cents. And so depending on, you know, how you want to use that 10 cents, you know, since it's not going to debt service, if you want to use it for paying for the civic center operations or for offsetting employee benefits or, you know, part of the emergency levy doubt is where we would be able to shift that 10 cent levy to and then raise it back up to the fifteen seventy seven. And hopefully that made sense. So and then I detail all of it further about how many how many dollars I would generate for each of those particular levies if if you exercise that option to do so. So that kind of lays out really what what your options are and and it kind of depends on how you would want to utilize those dollars or expend those dollars and where we would apply the additional 10 cent levy to.
I have a question here before you go further. For the operation of maintaining the the civic center, like currently, how you maintain that if there is none here? Or we have, because you says the limited 13, but we don't, we don't have any, right?
Yeah, the city is not currently utilizing that levy.
And how we maintain it, you like, how do we maintain the of the civic center using the Yonara fund or how?
Yes, that that is correct. So those expenditures are just being incurred are being paid for out of the general fund, which would become out of this the regular levy at eight dollars and 10 cents. And then other eligible revenues in the general fund that could be used for general purposes.
Okay, sound good. Thank you.
So I guess the question for the budget would be is whether you want to stay with the recommended 10 cent reduction or raise that levy up back up to fifteen seventy seven or somewhere between and do that through utilizing one of these levies that we have capacity to to use. And like I said, really kind of depends on on what you want to do with those additional dollars that are being levied.
If I could just add on to that, I really encourage the council to to focus on on just that. Where do you want to spend additional dollars? And then we can help you find that path forward. I've mentioned to you that the the fiscal year twenty two budget as proposed does have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar surplus. So, you know, if you're looking to add roughly that amount to a particular expenditure line, that would be the logical place to start where you could take those funds, bolster our spending in a particular area of interest that you have and not really manipulate the 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 tax rates as 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 Dennis just described. If you're looking to to add expenditures greater than that surplus amount, then again, I'd urge you just to kind of let us know where where you think that expenditure would be, where you'd like to add that funding and 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 really that's when Dennis can come back and say here's the best way that I would recommend that you fund it and and we can give you that give you that recommendation.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, Jeff and council. It's our opportunity to just have a discussion.
Well, Mayor, I'll I'll jump in. I, you know, we've gone through our however many hours of budget work session so far and looked at all the different revenue sources and proposed expenditures. And I came out of that process without having any particular thing that that I'm requesting. We increase expenditures beyond what's in the proposed budget. So I personally, you know, I I think it's I think it's good with the property tax cliff that we know is coming to build in as much capacity as we can in in the actual levy system. And I think if we relieve some of that pressure now, it gives us more for the future. I guess, Dennis, if you think that's incorrect, or if there's a different way you would frame that, can you? Can you say so? Because I understand, you know, the proposals with the debt service levy. So that's where we're that's where we are building in the capacity. Is that right?
Yeah, I think what you want to leave open is the flexibility to use that property tax rate where you want to in the future. So as you determine how to use that spending in the future, you could adjust that property tax rate at that time versus making that determination now.
Okay, thank you. So that's where I'm at, Mayor.
I really think, you know, we need really to stay. We don't need to increase the tax. We don't need to reduce it and leave it at it is. And that's why like for the past three years that I was in the council, each time we come up with something, we don't have money. And that was that was a problem because we tried to take from this, you know, budget and this budget and they say, no, you cannot use this for this and you cannot use that for that. I really, you know, think that there is many, many things that happening right now during this COVID nineteen. And and the crisis that we have, we just was not even giving people bread for the water. And because they cannot even do it and because we don't have money. So each time we say something that we say we don't have money, I think we 10 cent is not going to really benefit somebody like homeowner like me that much, but it will benefit a lot of people who are low income in this city to be benefited out of this. I think for the civic center, the civic center operations that we don't have anything, we can add 10 cent there or even add that we don't have anything, we can add ten cent there, or even add five cent here, and add five cent to the emergency, or four cent to the, three cent to the emergency. I, we, we can later on, three some, like, what is it called, the general fund that we can use it anything, even if we don't have anything right now, even though I know we are on the learning to do like affordable housing plan. And we don't have, we have one million, I understand that Jeff said we can add this or there, there is many options that we can do, but as the end of the day, it will be one hundred thousand, and I don't think that enough. Affordable housing need a lot money, that something is still, I'm going to say, still overdue, we need to really think seriously. And, and since we're going to have this committee for the affordable housing, and they will come us with plan, and we need really to, to be ready for that. We can, there is many, many options, we can do it. We don't have even to assign it to a specific program right now, we can put it on the reserve. And whenever we need it, we can use it from the reserve. But I think this is a, like, good amount of money that we can save if we add this ten cent to the civic, and we can free some, like, general fund money to the civic center operation, and we can free some general fund money that we can use it in anything else in the future. I guess if the people will be very happy that to know we are not increasing the tax, we are leaving it at the same. So I think that's, people will feel better than increasing it like another, if we compare us with the other cities. I know that we always been reducing it, and that's something good too, but we need money. Our priority is not reducing the tax levy. Our priority is to do a service for the city and to help the people who are in need in the city that they are taxpayer.
I tend to agree with Councilor Burgess, and I make a couple of things. I think the, the, you know, the cliff that we have talked about for twenty twenty-four is incredibly significant when the taxation on the multi-unit housing drops from whatever it's at at that point down to, to the same as regular houses, single-family homes. I mean, that could be, you know, going from sixty-five percent or whatever down to fifty-five or fifty, depending upon what the state's rollback is, is at that point in time, and that could be a significant drop in our tax revenues. I think building in or trying to continue to have that flexibility in our levy is really, really important. I would respectfully, you know, disagree with Mayor Pro-Tom that we haven't been able to find money. We have, over the last few years, we have gone from a very limited amount of money for affordable housing up to a million-dollar line item budget now annually for affordable housing. We've taken aid to agencies from two to three hundred thousand, I think up over to seven hundred thousand now as a line item. And there's, and those are just a couple of really quick examples that are very significant dollar changes and address, help to address some of the most significant needs in our community. As I've said before, we talk about sustainability, we've put in a climate action plan. We have to make sure that our budget is sustainable. If we don't have a sustainable financial plan, then nothing else in the city is going to matter, because you're not going to be able to afford to do it. And that is also really, really important when it comes to the triple-A bond rating for Moody's and the money that that saves us when we do go out and borrow money. So I agree with Councilor Burgess, I think the proposal that staff has given us is a good, fair proposal, and keeps that flexibility when we hit that cliff in a couple of years.
I agree, Councilor Burgess had said that, looking at the budget, there wasn't anything that really stood out that, that she felt a big need for, that needed to be there, although the one thing that, that, that I've always been concerned about is our transit budget. And, but there's a lot in this current budget money going towards that, so, so that's good. That was one thing that I'd always been concerned about. And Councilor Mims, you always, you've had me gain an appreciation for the triple-A, Moody's triple-A rating. And I think that says a lot for our finance department. And there's also something in our, in our IP packet about a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting that they achieved in June of nineteen, and that says a lot about our finance department. I mean, they didn't just randomly say, oh, let's do the ten cents. I, I, I admire Dennis and his department, I think they gave a lot of thought to this, and, and I'm, I'm fine with, with going with their recommendation.
Well, I guess my, my thoughts at, at the moment were in part driven, I think, by the, the sense that we are still dealing with the uncertainties and volatility of the, you know, the COVID crisis and the associated economic crisis. So having a little bit more access to funding to deal with those issues, whether it may be shelter, you know, food, whatever, whatever essentials may be driven by the, you know, the, the events that we, we were uncertain about. It seemed to me to be important to, to have that funding readily accessible. I will also mention another project, I don't know that it affects how we budget for this particular year, but you know, last week I noticed that a project had been deleted from our capital improvement program. The reversion of Jefferson and Market from one-way to two-way was no longer in the plan. And so I, I would, I would like that personally back in the plan. And if, you know, if that had any budgetary consequence at this moment, I just wanted to bring that up as well. So, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to have, given, given the uncertainties and complexities and volatilities of what we're dealing with, a little bit more budget flexibility at this, at this point to try to address whatever, you know, unforeseen circumstances we may find ourselves in. But, you know, in terms of the, where it might be drawn from, it seems the civic center and emergency funds, those levies seem like possibilities. You know, I think the employment benefits, I'm a little bit reluctant there, because that too is kind of a, a levy where there may be some volatility, so I would like to maintain some push in there. But it does seem within what Jeff said, we already have in place. And the emergency levy and the civic center levy, I think we should be able to bridge that gap that would bring us back where, you know, that, bring the ten cents back roughly. If I might offer just a couple of clarifications based on some comments. One, it's really important, it, it's hard, it's hard to remember this, but because, just because we're lowering the rate does not mean we're lowering property taxes. Matter of fact, you know, we should be clear that we're not lowering property taxes. You have so many other variables that go into a property tax bill, including the rollback rate, which is increasing, so that's going to be more of your home is now taxable than it was last year, as well as the assessed value on your home. And so when we say we, we've dropped the property tax rate for ten years, that's, that's accurate, but that does not mean that our property owners, be it residential, commercial, industrial, are paying less taxes to the city. Overall, our levy, which is the actual dollar amount that we collect, has gone up over those years. So rates go down, but the levy goes up, we just need to be clear, make sure that we're clear when we're talking about that, that with this ten, ten cent proposal, we're not lowering tax, we're not lowering someone's taxes. We are reducing that rate at, at which they pay taxes. It's a bit confusing, but, but that's, that's important. And then regards to, you know, again, I kind of really try to focus on what you want to spend that money for. If you're looking to respond to one-time types of issues like, like COVID relief is a good one. If you want to spend more in COVID relief, I, I really, my recommendation, and Dennis can, can offer a counter one if he, if, if he wishes, would be, you know, use your reserves, use your emergency levy to be able to do that. Because you're not, we don't anticipate it to be a recurring expense every, every year. And again, you want your rates to be fairly stable from year to year. So you don't want to see that, you don't want to see those rates go up and down based on one-time expenditures in one year and not the next year. You have an emergency reserve, you have general fund reserves, and if you felt like there were some gaps in COVID relief that aren't covered by existing programs, then, then I would suggest you, you, you use those for those one-time expenditures. If you're looking at more of a permanent line item, something that you, you don't expect to go away, you want to hire staff, or you want to expand a service, or a contribution to aid agencies, whatever it may be, that's when we'll probably start to look at that levy option a little bit more, because you, you, you want that to be sustainable from year to year, and of course, it's not sustainable to, to tap those reserves year after year.
And I do want to just chime in a little bit. So I, I heard, thanks, Jeff, you just mentioned we can tap into the reserves or the emergency fund levy. Should there be something that we want to do for some projects? And I'm happy that our emergency fund levy does give us quite a bit of flexibility in what we can utilize those funds for, is any governmental purpose. I, I do see some value, of course, to having, so, it, it would be more income that we'll have for the city, but I also hear that if we needed something, wanted to fund a program specifically, we could try to figure that out, what that program is and try to figure out where the money's come from. Right now, I'm not hearing anything specific, of course, affordable housing. Climate action are very important things that I know that we want to continue to have reserves for, or funds readily available when they, when, when the need should arise for something. And so right now, I don't, I have anything that I'm hearing that we can utilize the funds for. I, I've been through budget now three times, and I know at the end of the budget, somebody might make a recommendation of something that they want, you know, the, you know, to be a part of the budget. I think if that should happen in this, you know, during this time, we'll be able to find some funds within, within, within something. And so right now, I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation with the, with the levy stand as it is. Again, if there is something specific that we want to fund, especially if it's something ongoing, we have opportunity, if it's not within this time, in August, August comes around so quickly, we'll be able to, you know, make that a priority for the staff to put it in the budget for next time. So I don't feel like we're missing out if we don't do anything right now, personally. All right, so it doesn't sound like we're going, I think I heard the majority of council.
The last comment, please. I, I know it's not going, the way it's going, but I really want to just mention that, interestingly, soon we're going to talk about sale tax option, which is like really interesting that we are lowering, you know, the tax here, and we, we are thinking of adding a sale tax option. I just want to lay that out there. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so it doesn't sound like we're going to make any changes to the staff recommended tax levy. We are going to move to the next item unless anybody has any final comments. We're going to discuss public input opportunities for the preliminary police plan, I can say it, preliminary police plan.
Thanks, Mayor, I'll take the lead on this one, and be interested to hear your feedback. So we've, we talked a little bit, and as a reminder, Councilor Burgess and Mayor Pro-Tom Sully, Councilor Weiner, were asked to collaborate with me and just briefly discuss this. Unfortunately, we didn't have a chance to align schedules with Councilor Weiner. So just Councilor Burgess and, and Mayor Pro-Tom Sully and I met. And, you know, we talked through the various ways, obviously, you know, we're going to do the traditional ways, which, which are currently available. But I think we all acknowledge that, that those are insufficient for, for something like this. And we really tried to focus our discussion on how do we get this plan in front of people who otherwise normally wouldn't participate, who, who have barriers to participation in some way, shape, or form, be it language, be it work schedules, be it just a myriad of other things that are, that are in, in someone's life. And so we even, you know, talked through the listening post concept and, and didn't feel like those would, would, would reach far enough. So one idea that we floated was to really look to connect with people that are, are well-connected themselves within some targeted communities, particularly BIPOC communities, and, and contract with them to solicit public input on the plan. So for example, we would look to find somebody in, in the immigrant and refugee community that we know that, that has the trust of that community, that has some, some good translation, language skills, and actually contract with them to, to do the, do the preliminary plan outreach for us. And that's a non-traditional approach, but if you think about it, a lot of times when we do master plans, we hire consultants and they coordinate our, they coordinate our public input as part of the drafting of that, of that master plan, like the bike plan or the parks plan. So this would be actually paying somebody as an independent contractor that, that has particular expertise in their connectedness with these communities to, to take this plan, really learn it themselves, ask whatever questions they need to, to, to really understand that plan, and then letting them go out and, and bring the feedback back to us. So it's not staff going and asking for that feedback, it's not the council doing the listening posts, it's us contracting and compensating somebody to get that feedback and bring it back to us and present it ultimately to you, unfiltered through, through my lens or through a council member's lens. I don't have a proposal for you on who that is or what it looks like. I would continue to work with the three counselors to, to best determine who that would be, or what, or it doesn't necessarily have to be an individual, it could be an organization too. We, we would kind of have to think about who, who that would be. We, we'd probably spend a few thousand dollars to, to do that, and ultimately bring you back again, again, that feedback. So before we went too far down that path, because it is a little bit non-traditional, we wanted to, we wanted to get the full council's feedback on that.
I think it's a really interesting concept. I think the idea of, you know, we've talked about the importance of trying to meet people where they are as much as possible in environments where they are comfortable. And as you say, using people who have the language skills to interact with various populations. So I, I think it's a really kind of unique idea, and it certainly doesn't close off any, you know, any other avenues that we have for people to give input, but is simply an addition. So I, I think it sounds interesting.
Yeah, I, I would agree that taking, taking it to where people are is important. And so I would be supportive of this, you know, opportunity. I think it will be key to make sure that whoever is that individual that is going out is not biased in their approach, but being very neutral.
I like the idea, and I would say, I would think that the meetings should also, whatever meetings they have ought to be with, with communities ought to be open, so that if a couple of council members or others want to sit in and listen, that everyone would have that opportunity as well, but it would, again, be going, going to the people.
Sounds good to me, too.
So it sound like, okay, all right. So it sound like everybody's on board, so, great. Jeff, do you need, or Councilor Burgess, Weiner, or Mayor Pro-Tom, do you all need anything else from us? All right.
I, I think just, just a, a chance to set timeframe expectations here, because it's going to take us probably a few weeks to identify somebody, and then we have to, you know, formally contract with them, we'll have to draft up a, an agreement of sorts like we would a consultant or anybody else. And then it's obviously not a, not a, a, a small document. And then it's obviously not a, not a, a small document to digest. So the, the person's going to have to, or the organization's going to have to really invest some time, which they'd be compensated for in learning the plan. I, I'm thinking you just might not hear back for a couple of months on that. So it could be early spring by the time that feedback returns to you. I think it's well worth that time, but I just want to make sure that you know this isn't going to be a quick turnaround.
The councillors will still be meeting. Oh, go right ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Mayor.
No, I, I was just making sure that the councillors would still be meeting with Jeff during, during this process and discussing, you know, who you might be looking for, timeframe even. So I'm comfortable if you all are just having that conversation personally.
Sure. I, I just want to just say something that, well, last time we talked about maybe translating some of the documents and not the whole thing. I, I really, when I, I'm changing my mind on that after I look at it. I think it's very good to translate the whole documents, and at least we will have copy from it, because it is a reference. Whenever I talk like, look at the recommendation outside and you go back and exactly read what it means. I just believe that we need to translate the whole documents. It costs us money, but we do have money and we can figure out money all the time. So there is no problem on this, and it deserves to put some money for the people to understand this issue.
I can offer, we did get an initial set of quotes for translation. And we, we got two scenarios. One was just the two-page recommendation for for translation into three languages. And it's, it's fairly inexpensive. It's about a thousand dollars. And then we said, what about just the chapter that has the recommendations? So not, not the chapter about the staffing of the department and some of the introductory, like the CPRB and all that kind of stuff, but just the chapter that has the narrative on the 36 recommendations. And that'll, that'll come in, at least, or the initial quote was nine thousand dollars. Yeah, about, yeah, about 40 pages worth. That, that's about $9,000, so about 3,000 per language.
I would encourage that we do that 40 pages or whatever, because I think it does help put things in perspective for people. It'd be nice to be able to do the whole thing, but I, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily worth the cost of doing the whole thing, because I, I don't think many people are going to read the whole thing. I think, I think if they can see the recommendations and see the context of those recommendations, it would seem to me that that's the most important thing. And yeah, for $9,000, I would say definitely.
I agree, and I think that goes along with our, our strategic plan of the social justice and equity. I, I think that's very important, and I think it's well worth that money.
Just to qualify something here, when I said the whole thing, I don't mean the whole document. I meant the 40 pages for the recommendations, to be clear here, because that's the most important thing we need the people to know about.
Yeah, and it's definitely valuable to hire qualified translators.
Yes, to give that credit to Jeff, he is the one who said that. I really, like, love it. And, you know, I would have not come with a better idea than this. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I would be supportive of, of the 40 pages. Sound like the majority of councillors shaking their head supportive of it, so we'll go with that. All right, anything else? And I'm happy to know that you all continue to meet, and I think we'll just kind of have updates along the way. All right, we're going to discuss a miscellaneous council meeting and communication items. The first thing is moving meeting times one hour earlier. And just wanted to get people kind of fast, quick, final thoughts on that.
Very quick, I agree.
All right.
I'm fine either way.
I am as well, and I haven't heard of it. I haven't gotten any feedback. I don't know if yours have on it.
Same here, I agree.
All right, what about public comment sign-in procedures? And I can remind councillors what that was. So this was having something in the foyer when we were back in person that people would sign up for an agenda item, and then that will be handed to the mayor to read their names and to present them. So they'll be signing up early.
I personally don't like that. I, I think it's too restrictive to the public, and I think we, over the years, we've had lots of people who've come to the podium and said, oh, I, I didn't come planning to talk, I just came to listen, but I heard such and such, and I, I really want to comment on it. And I think that's restrictive. I don't, I don't feel like we lose that much time when people come up. I think in the last couple of years, we've really seen the vast majority of people have gotten a slip and signed ahead of time, so they could just put their little sticker down. So I'm really comfortable continuing the way it is. I, the one addition I do like, and we talked about it before, is, is knowing whether people are Iowa City residents or not. And I would have one question. When are we talking about changing the time of meetings?
I just want you to just to tell us exactly what you mean by, you know, signing. And do you know, like, public comment, or you mean, like, during the public hearing?
I, I think, well, my thought, I, I think when, when the school district does it, I think they sign up for each item. Or do they only have public comment? I think any item that they open up, but if it's just public comment, we can certainly, you know, do whatever we want. I just think that it could be beneficial for people to sign up ahead of time. And also, we can have, it is on the slip that people need to give their address, or their, the city where they live. I think it's the full address. And so we'll be able to capture that ahead of time. The first name, the last name, which we ask from people, as well as their address. And I know our city clerk is on here.
For public comment.
For, and it could be for public comment or even for any, any agenda item. It could get confusing for any agenda item. I can see that, because we have every agenda item.
Yeah, I think I asked that question last time, Mayor, and my recollection is that we were just talking about.
I really agree that for the public comment, it will be an easy thing. I saw it at the school.
I think there's a delay with Mayor Protem. Sorry about that. Mayor Protem, I think there's a lag in communication, potentially.
Yes, I think that, tell me that the internet connection is weak.
Yep, yep.
That's why I feel like I'm jumping. I don't know.
Yep, so why don't we have Attorney Dilks go ahead and give your comments?
Well, I, I just, I remember asking that question last time about whether it was going to be all items or just public comment and items not on the agenda. And I thought it was the latter, just for public comment of items not on the agenda. There's some issues, I think, with doing it for everything.
Yes, and and I think now that I'm remembering, is only for public comment. We, we went through that the last time. So it's only for public comment and not for every agenda item.
Yes, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was really thinking that for public comment, it, it could be, I saw it is very effectively during the school board where people will come and hand out some, like, small paper ahead of time, writing their name. I just like it. And also, the thing is, while the public comment is going on, is still, people can, like, say, for example, somebody talk about something, and someone else was sitting there and never want to talk, they can still write something and go and give it to the, you know, again, they can submit it while the people are doing the public comment. I, I like it for the public comment.
Yeah, I think maybe what Mayor Protem is suggesting is sort of a hybrid of what we have now. Mayor, you identified the benefit of having, you know, the, kind of the queue that you could see, I think, on Zoom, which is helpful. So if people could sign up at the beginning or, you know, right before the meeting, and you would have that list, but also give people the opportunity to come up, you know, on, at the moment. I mean, if, if that's workable, that seems like that might get us where we're trying to go.
Because then you have, you have an initial list of people, initial queue of people who want to speak at public comment, and then you may have a few more, as Councillor Burgess just said, add on at the, at the end, but it could make the most of it move fairly quickly.
I think, you know, that sounds fine. I, I've never really felt this was a major snag in our process, but, you know, what you were just describing, Laura, I think, would be fine. But yeah, it's not something that really jumped out at me as an issue that we needed to revise in any meaningful, you know, major way.
I, I agree. I think that the current process has worked well for us. And I think a previous mayor, if there was a room full of people, he would ask ahead of time for folks to raise their hand if they were planning to speak. That way, he knew that, you know, there were two or there were 20, and that would make a difference on how, how long they were able to speak. I know it works very well for the school district. And, and as Mayor Protem said, they do have that option of adding their name throughout the meeting. If all of a sudden they decide, oh, I want to say something, I, I, I've worked this through my head, and I've got something to say, they can still add their name. They could pass, pass their name up to, say, Kelly, and she could get it to the mayor if, if there was time, if it was one, within our timeframe of the public comment time.
One other thing I would offer, and I'm not sure Eleanor's response to this. In the past, we have never offered public comment on the consent agenda. That's been something relatively recent. Usually, when an agenda is put together, a consent agenda is, you know, stuff that should be very non-controversial. You know, accepting minutes, it's accepting correspondence, it's, you know, that sort of thing. I don't believe in all the early years on my council that we ever offered the opportunity for the public to comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eleanor, on the consent. And, and we don't have people that often, but it's just a thought potentially of just even eliminating that.
Your mic isn't on, Eleanor.
You, you certainly don't have any legal obligation to allow public comment on anything except for public hearings. But with respect to the consent calendar, I think we have allowed public comment on, on those items. Sometimes, even though they're routine, you want to get them separate, separated, so you only have to have them, have one vote, but there might be an item someone wants to comment on. That, I'm not recalling that we've ever not allowed comment on.
So it does sound.
Mayor. You know, my internet is really terrible today. But I just want to add another thing, another benefit that I can see here is for the mayor and, and, and me, when we taking time. For example, if we knew how many people ahead of time, for example, there are 15 people would like to speak, and we know that public comment go only until eight o'clock, maybe instead, we're saying three to five minutes. And if we think that will make them, like, go more than that, we can say, okay, since we have a lot of people today, we're going to give everybody three minutes instead of, like, three to five minutes. I just see, like, some benefit to it, during, especially during a public comment. Thank you.
It did seem, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a majority that was in, in agreement to the hybrid model of the public comment. Is that fair? Yes, okay, all right. So we will move forward with that. And then council emails and correspondence. I know that Eleanor had given us an update about that.
Sure. Mayor, just before we get to that one, I think there was also some interest in having a timer.
There was interest in having a timer.
Where that went.
Yep. So there's a couple of things. There's an interest in having a timer, as well as an online option for individuals. So, and then I know councillor Mims also mentioned, let's see. Oh, when will we start at least the one hour early? And so, why don't we tackle the start one hour early? Maybe people have had an opportunity to think about that. And I don't know from a, I would, I would think that we would do it from a public notification point of view. How much time would it take for the public to be notified and adjust? I, I guess I will throw out a proposal. April, the first meeting in April, that would give two months' opportunity to kind of share it publicly, and then hopefully only a few months, and then we'll be back in person. So it, it may get people used to that. So I'm seeing some nodding of heads as the first meeting in April, okay? And then let's talk about the, maybe the online version option might be the easiest right now. Will we want staff to try to bring us back a recommendation, or just do a little quick study on how would that look? And then give us a report back on what would that look like if we had in-person, along with the online option? I'm seeing some shaking of heads. So Jeff, if you can report back to the council on that option. And then the last thing is the timer. What are people's thoughts there? Or is something visible, I guess, will be visible in council chambers, but it could also be visible potentially for those individuals that are online?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not totally seeing shaking of heads, just a few. Okay, all right, all right. So if you can find out what the option is from staff to make that possible, that, that will be great. Last item that we're going to talk about in this section is the council emails and correspondence. All right.
There were, there were two issues there. That's when emails to council, the council@iowacity.org, come to you, whether that's as it is now in the next packet or in real time. And then the second issue was whether you want all communication to council to be included, as it is now on the council agenda, on the consent calendar.
I like the idea of getting the emails in real time.
Yeah, I would agree, emails in real time. As far as the consent agenda, it seemed like some items, sometimes I personally don't think it's appropriate to be there. I wonder if it's, if there's any way to have an option, if people want to include it?
I, I think one thing we talked about was, obviously, if it's a consent, if it's a agenda item, it will be included under that item. But, but not just any correspondence. If a, if a council member wanted to talk about a particular piece of correspondence, you could let us know, and then we would put that on the council agenda.
I think I personally like that approach.
Okay. And then with respect to getting the, the emails in real time, I think what we talked about was forwarding them to your individual email addresses, just as a kind of reminder that you're not supposed to be replying all to these things.
Seem like you have a majority of agreement.
Okay, great, thanks.
I think it was unanimous. Shocking. All right, we're going to move on. Clarification of agenda items for our 7:00 PM. Meeting agenda today. Anyone have anything?
I mean, I don't, I don't want to pull anything from the consent, consent agenda, but I, I would. While we're doing it or after, whenever the appropriate time is, I'd like to make a comment about the CPRB. Minutes, which include all their recommendations.
Anything else from the, from a meeting agenda? All right. Moving on to info packet, January 7.
I had a quick question about IP4, which was the 2020 building stats. Jeff, I think you'd mentioned this before, but do you have a sense of just how that compares to other years? I noted in the, I think it was in like the financial report. It was talking about fiscal years and had some statistics in the same info packet, but, and this was calendar year for the building stats. On page 176, but just off the top of your head, do you have a sense of how down it is for 2020? Sorry to put you on the spot. You're muted.
I have a quick suggestion, since you bring that up, Laura. As I recall, I think staff does this every year. Would it be possible in a packet, maybe to take this same report from the last five or six years and just put that in there? So we could kind of look at it. But I'm assuming we've had that same report every year. If so, just give us the last five or six years, maybe?
Yeah, we have a. Kind of an annual comparison that's ready to go from 2009 to 2020. So that'd be a one-page report that we could, we could easily put in the packet. But, you know, we finished the year, as you can see, with 87 million in construction value for, for our permits. And just looking back at the last four years, it was 231 million, 192 million, 216 million, and 388 million. So 87 million is the lowest we've been. You'd have to go all the way back to, it looks like 2011 before we were down in that, that area. So it was a tough year, a tough year. And, and, you know, in the report that we can issue or we can send to you, you'll notice that. It's different based on the type of. Type of permit or single family and our, our single family permits remain pretty strong. It's multifamily and commercial that you see a, a big drop off. But we'll put that report in, in a future packet for you.
Thank you. And thanks for just that very general comparison. I didn't, that's kind of what I was going for is how much is it down? And the answer is a lot. So thank you.
I, I have something, but I really don't know if this on the IB or just like Jeff. You know, what is it called? The letter to us or email to us about the 110 surplus. That there is an option, we can add it to affordable housing if we need to. I just want to see like what, what the council think about his recommendation for that.
Yeah, just for clarification and for the public's understanding. The fiscal year '22 budget has a $122,000 surplus. I don't have the exact number, but roughly $122,000 surplus. And as I was talking with some of you over the course of this budget season, I've indicated that you certainly have the ability to apply that to a. A line item without having to adjust taxes and while still presenting a balanced budget to the public. So if that's affordable housing, you know, you can, you can easily add $100,000. And put that towards affordable housing or for aid agencies or any, any initiative that you see fit. And right now it's just kind of excess surplus that we're showing right now.
Could I make a recommendation? I, I think that the $122,000. Funds, the surplus is very important. We're going to have other opportunities to talk budget. If we can hold off, but definitely think about if there's any projects or any. Support for affordable housing, if that would be the one, then we'll have it in the future budget conversation. But I think it's good for us to be, have that in the forefront of our head. I, I've been on, like I said, I've been through a few of these. And I know last minute, if we could avoid that last minute, you know. Proposal is what I would definitely suggest. But think about it and we'll, we don't have a lot of time right now to navigate through that though. All right. Any other item for January 7? You're on mute.
Sorry, went the wrong way. Just quickly point out IP3, the comprehensive annual financial report. This is a pretty significant report that Dennis and his staff put together. A lot, a lot of detail there, but they do a great job. And that's something they've gotten awards for a number of years.
Anything else? Moving on to January 14.
This IP. Sorry, IP9, which was the strategic plan update for January 2021, very well presented, lots of really good information. If that hasn't yet gone out with like one of the city releases, I hope that it will shortly. Really accessible and helpful summary of also how we, how our adaptations in this really weird last year. Still fit with our strategic plan. So I was glad to see that.
We do have item. IP8, and that is for the joint entities agenda. Is there anything that someone wants to add? The city of Corville will be hosting.
Um, yes, Mayor, I was giving some thought to that. And I, I think if, if the rest of the groups that attend that meeting would agree. I think we need to make some kind of a joint statement that we, our community won't tolerate. How do I want to put it? Anger and. Or maybe somebody else can come up with a phrasing for that, like the violence and the anger and the intimidation. That we, we, we just won't tolerate in our communities. If others think that we maybe should bring that up.
I guess personally, I, I'm not sure what we're referring to. With the anger, violence, or intimidation.
I mean, my, my sense is that, that Counselor Taylor is referring to what happened at the US Capitol. On January 6th, essentially insurrection and the, and the ongoing threats to state capitals. That, that, that we've heard about and are prepared for.
What are people thoughts on?
Mayor, I think I, I was thinking of that because of the recent events and the theme for, for this year's MLK events was. Truth, love, and justice. And I think if we could kind of play on that as far as making a statement, that might be better.
So are you thinking that our agenda item, we can more so make a statement as. Make a statement related to. Something that you mentioned, and I guess we can probably connect outside of this to create something if people are in agreement that we will do that.
Yeah, right. Maybe a more positive spin on it would be that, the truth, love, and justice in the community as opposed to the negative aspects of it.
Okay. Is this something that you would like to present? When, when, on the agenda item from the city of Iowa City?
Oh, I, I could if you'd like to, since I brought it up.
Okay.
Don't have a lot to say about it, except that I think that it's, that's, it's important at this time.
Maybe what we'll do is we'll connect if people are in agreement with it, and then we can figure out who will present and, and all, and all that. So any other item that people want to suggest for the 25th? Joint Entities Meeting?
I mean, I, I have to, I think it's useful to continue discussing COVID, at least to some extent. The, I was really happy to see that on, on this evening's agenda. I don't know if they want to have anyone speak to where, sort of to that group on, on where things stand in this community.
So maybe we can make a suggestion for the city of Corville to have a Jones County representative come forth. To talk about COVID. So we're seeing not enough heads. Jeff, will you make that request? And then I think we'll just, I'll make the announcement of our change in time, started in April. Anything else? All right. We have, I think we'll just end here. And we'll do our council updates at the end of our formal meeting tonight. All right. Anything else? We will see you at 7:00 and remember to sign out of this and sign back in to the new Zoom link. See you soon.